I'd like to call to order the Spark City Council Meeting of March 25th, together with a roll call, please, to order with a roll call, excuse me.
We're together.
Sorry.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members, Ratty? Absent. Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt? Absent. City Attorney Adams?
Here.
And City Clerk Gardner? Here. We have a quorum.
Okay, next is invocation speaker, which is Pastor Steve Bond from the Summit Christian Church. If you'd all stand, please welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Before I have a word of prayer, I wanted to thank you for sending us Linda Patterson. She's doing an incredible job for us, and this is her first major project. It's a local outreach where we're expecting to have about 2,000 people, serving in 26 different projects. And just thank you for sending her our way. Lord, we want to thank you for your grace over this great city that we live in. We praise you and thank you for carrying us through the winter, and now that spring is upon us, we thank you for the change of seasons. Father, I thank you for the blessing and the harmony that we evidence in this city that we experience. And we thank you that it begins here with this council. And we pray today that your hand would be upon them, that there would be collegiality, that there would be honesty, there would be grace. Father, that you would help them to speak appropriately to one another, and that you would be honored in their decisions. And we realize it is an incredible blessing to live in this country, and in this state, and in this city. We also realize, Father, that there are great challenges facing us. And so we cry out to you that you would give our leaders, these people in front of me right now, wisdom to make appropriate, wise, and righteous decisions that would guide our community in ways that would please you. So we thank you now. In these moments that they gather, we pray for your presence to be real, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Bond. Mr. Carey, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. If you want to speak, please fill out one of these cards, and you'll have three minutes. I have one, Mr. Gene Gardella. Point out, Gene.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Naomi, Marion, Anna Mae, Leanne, Mary, and six others injured, one very seriously. October the 2nd, 2006, nickel mines, Amish Elementary School, nickel mines, Pennsylvania. Since I was last here, have any of you asked yourselves, what can I do after seeing or reading any of the many news stories about murders of people that occurred during the last several weeks? I fear that death caused by gun violence has become a background noise, just a part of the culture that we live in. Please be aware. If we are to move forward in meeting government's highest and greatest responsibility to provide for the safety and security of its citizens by addressing gun violence, it is important that we come to a common understanding of rights guaranteed in the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. I'm not an attorney, but I've spent hours trying to gain a better understanding of those rights. There are several things that are important to our common understanding and clear in the Supreme Court judge decision of DC versus Heller issued in dissent in June of 2008. The court found that citizens have an absolute right to own and possess guns. They found that this right is based largely on the right to self-defense. They also found that the ownership and possession of guns can be limited in certain circumstances, like the prohibition of ownership or possession of guns by felons or mentally ill persons. Many cities, counties, and states have enacted laws and ordinances that limit or restrict the rights granted in the Second Amendment. Our federal government appears unable to meet its responsibility to provide for the safety and security of its citizens caused by gun violence, leaving that responsibility up to you. You are doing many things. You are meeting your primary response and highest responsibility as a council member to provide for the safety and security of your community, its citizens, and guests. Examine your police budget, your fire, your municipal judiciary, your building code enforcement, jails, flood control, lifeguards, and even snow removal. These and other safety and security activities consume by far the greatest part of your resources. You can and do provide for the safety and security of your community. What else can you do? Do you do enough? Should you do more? Should we do more? And should we do something else? My question, what can I do? If that becomes your question, we can find specific things to do and take the first steps to improve the safety and security to protect your citizens, friends, family, and guests from gun violence. I'll be back to visit at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Appreciate that. Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Moved and approved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is 3.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Spark City Council Meeting of March 11th, 2013. Any omissions or corrections? Looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson?
Moved and approved.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the meeting minutes of March 11th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Is there someone here from Fair Housing that's... Come on down. I'll go ahead and read this, and then I'll present it to you, and then you can make a few comments if you like. Have a seat. Whereas April 2013 marks the 45th anniversary of the Title 8... It's a Roman numeral. I have trouble figuring it out. Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Federal Fair Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in the sale, rental, and financing of housing, and prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988 added familial status and handicap to those classes protected by Title 8, and added strong new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and judicial and administrative enforcement procedures. And whereas Nevada state law also prohibits discrimination on the basis of ancestry, sexual orientation, and gender identity or expression. And whereas it is the solemn and sworn duty of government at all levels to defend the rights of all citizens and oppose our citizens' diminished the rules of all. And whereas Silver State Fair Housing Council actively works to ensure equal housing opportunity for all people in Nevada to freely choose where they want to and can afford to live, and the City of Sparks supports the efforts of Silver State Fair Housing Council and all other agencies pursuing fair housing. Now therefore I, Gino "Martini" Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 2013 as Fair Housing Month.
Thanks for being here. Just give us your name for the record. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Roberto Ortiz, and I'm the Director of Programs for Silver State Fair Housing Council. A nonprofit agency with mission is to ensure equal housing opportunity for all residents of Nevada. Our agency has a long and productive relationship with the City of Sparks, providing fair housing awareness and advocacy for Sparks residents and housing providers under the CDVG program. Some of the funding that we get from the City of Sparks is used for a poster contest that we complete every year, and we have some calendars to provide to members of the council as part of our commitment to provide equal housing opportunity across the city. On behalf of the board and Silver State Fair Housing Council, we thank you for continuing the efforts in affirmatively furthering fair housing in the City of Sparks. We believe that equal housing opportunity allows us to break down barriers to in the community and relate to each other as neighbors and individuals. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. We appreciate it. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Appreciate it. Next is 4.2, Mr. Lawson.
And we have with us today Lynn Keller from C4 Cubed. And we have a new startup business called Creative Crates. And this is an ongoing series of presentations that we're going to have at the City of Sparks on our second meeting of each month to highlight one of the startup businesses in our region. And we're trying to do everything we can as council people to promote growth in the region. And I think this is a big part of it, is just hearing some of the really cool ideas that are out there that these guys are working on. So please take it away, guys.
Thank you, Mayor Martini and members of the council. Do you mind if I stand?
No, just give us your name for the record, please.
Well, thank you. My name is Matt Carter. I'm the Chief Operating Officer over at Creative Crate. I'm the newest member of Creative Crate.
Go, Matt. It's one of the wireless mics.
Yeah.
We can hear you. So when we replay you on TV, we know what you're saying.
All right, once again, Matt Carter, Chief Operating Officer over at Creative Crate. I am the newest member of Creative Crate. And I was brought on by the Chief Operating Officer, Joel... Excuse me, Chief Executive Officer Joel Bauer over here. He's put together a wonderful product and put together a great team. And it's something I know that the City of Sparks and the surrounding regions can be very proud of in the coming future. So just to tell you a little bit about the product. It's time with your kids. That's what it's all about, is quality. And that's what we're trying to get. We're trying to get, once a month, Creative Crate delivers a high-quality project designed to bring families together and help parents create long-lasting, meaningful relationships with their children. Additionally, we supply detailed parenting education to help mothers and fathers gain a thorough understanding of who their children are and how they learn as individuals. Now, I'm a father. I have two toddlers at home. I did not know what I was getting myself into. Thank goodness, I've been blessed with the most amazing wife. She's 25 years old, and she has really owned being a mother. My child speaks Spanish, sign language, knows the Aleph Bait, which I didn't even know what that is, but apparently it's the Hebrew alphabet. And he speaks English. And this is not because my mother's a supermom. It's because she's blessed to be able to stay at home, but then she runs out of things to do with that toddler. And so she's searching the Internet for things to do with that child. But in order to find additional things outside of online to do and actually communicate with your child, stay-at-home mothers are constantly looking for things to do. And this isn't just stay-at-home mothers. I actually had the first box come to my house, and I did that with my child. And I thought, what amazing idea for the boxes show up at a father or a mother's workplace, and they get to take this box home and create valuable learning moments with their child. The other great thing about it, it's not just a bunch of crafts in a box, but we actually get an opportunity to learn more about our child and not just pass the time. So here's what people are saying about this product. Amy and Alexis. Amy is a business owner here. Reno Running is her business. And she had an opportunity to use the box with her child. And she says that she'll spend $50 most weekends to go to a store and paint a pot with her child. But they teach her nothing about her child. And Creative Crate does that and sends it right to her door. That's amazing. You know, my wife, she goes to the store, and she was just looking for tons of things to do with our children at home. And she ends up spending $50, $100 at the craft store for three or four hours of fun. And then it's done. And she had to go and spend that time, take a couple toddlers to the store. And as you know, that is not an easy job. Go ahead. Angel said that I love the whole Creative Crate package. It made it extremely simple to focus on enjoying the time with my kids instead of making sure everything is set up. It's unique and fun. In fact, Brendan sleeps with his Creative Crate monkey. Now, these guys are on the creative side, along with other team members that are back at the office working right now on creating new boxes for the coming months. But one of the things I thought was amazing was when I got my Creative Crate box, and not only is everything set up, ready to go, but the mixing container for one of the projects, there's actually a monkey, stuffed animal monkey shoved in this crate. My son opens up the container, and out pops a pretty decent-sized monkey. And apparently Angel's son is sleeping with his monkey still. So it's not just a quick, easy project. Takes a few days to get through all the projects at various times of the day, but then something for them to keep moving forward until their next crate arrives in the mail. Go ahead. So Creative Crate got their start at Startup Weekend in Elko. It was part of...I don't know if you're familiar with Startup Weekends, but you get a bunch of different minds together to come and try and, you know, start a business. And it was started in Elko. And we plan not only to have the business start here, but escalate it to a different level right here in this region as well. So why our product, not other products? So families are limited on time and stress. I can attest to that. Time with my children is very valuable. Parents know how important time with their kids is. And they're actually...we're finding that parents are starting to feel guilty that that time isn't being spent properly when they do have that time with their children. Some of the current options are facility-based, do-it-yourself, or we have some competitors in this area as well. Facilities-based, every time my child goes to one of the facilities-based fun houses or bounce houses, they're wonderful and great. Parents don't always have the time to go there. They're rather costly. And I kid you not, my kid has a runny nose within two or three days every time going to those places. They're germ...just a real place to pick up nasty colds. Do-it-yourself option, I think we talked a little bit about that. You know, my wife going to the Marshalls and picking up a number of different crafts and things to do, and it gets pretty spendy. And then our competitors. There are two competitors in this area. One in the Bay South San Francisco area, another one out of New York City. They're both doing a box to your door. But the thing that they don't do is they don't teach you about your child and teach you about how your child learns. So that's one of the things that we really pride ourselves on is it's not just a bunch of stuff in a box. We want to teach you how to communicate with your child and how your child learns so that you can take them to the levels that they need to be as being individuals. Our advantages are that we bring it to your door. We have wow projects. Our team is simply amazing. I'm not the most creative guy. I'm an operations guy. So I just think it's so amazing when people use their minds to create something so amazing. The projects, you would really be astounded by the projects. The first project actually came from one of our team members. Mothers has been teaching it in her class. She has a high-level degree in early childhood education. And she has used this in a number of different settings annually. And it's actually, you make a dinosaur egg, and it's after you're learning about dinosaurs. And then the parent puts in a fossil into the egg after the child has made the egg without them knowing. And then a couple days later, they chip away at that egg, and they find a dinosaur fossil in it. It's really...my son's going to be talking about it the rest of his life, guaranteed. And then again, once again, something that's above what the other competitors are doing right now is the education for the parents. This is really key to our system. And then also learning about your child. We don't want to just pass the time. We want to get to know our child. As you have, I'm sure, seen in your positions, being a little bold here, but where our country's going because we're losing the values at the home. A lot of doctors, a lot of psychologists are talking about just time at the dinner table. Just eat dinner with your family two or three times a week. And, you know, I know that that's not enough. We're taking it to a new level. Not only eating dinner once or twice or three times a week with your child, but actually sitting down and spending time with them. So it's not just a stay-at-home mother thing. It's not just a homeschool thing. It's a family thing. So here's what our audience is. I think that most of us know someone with a toddler. We have a toddler, or we're the grandparents of a toddler. But our key market is about 1.88 million. These are parents with children of 3 to 11, at least one stay-at-home parent, and a $70,000-plus household income. We also have an untapped secondary market that we think's going to be really big, and we're really going to market to in the coming months, and that's grandparents. We're finding that grandparents really think that this is a neat idea and actually want to purchase a subscription to this for their grandchild or for their child to give to their grandchild. The primary market is relationship with established bloggers and information marketing. Secondary is the target publications and established organizations. Go ahead. One more. What our current bloggers have said about this product is we would love to do a feature on the fun activities to keep kids entertained this spring and feature your Creative Crate subscription service. Your service is perfect with my mom-targeted audience. So this is the type of thing we're looking at. These are bloggers with a large audience, and we could tap into them just from a grassroots level, show them how creative and how amazing our product is. Here's Susan from Susan'sDisneyFamily.com, another blogger. I love the idea of the Creative Crate. What fun. Just this is what we're getting all over the place. These are just a couple of the many bloggers and moms that we've reached out to and fathers that we've reached out to and grandparents. They're saying all the same things, so we know that we're on to something good here. So you might not think that, you know, reaching out to a blogger is that big of a deal. But here's just the two that we got some initial response back from. You see the monthly visitors, $55,000. This is kind of a mid-range blogger here. They get 2,200 monthly feeds. They have Facebook fans upwards of 11,000, and then Twitter followers of 6,000 with combined reach of 75. You see over SusanDisneyFamily.com, she has similar numbers with a little bit more Twitter followers. So just one mass tweet or Facebook feed from one of these individuals really gives us a lot of pop in the industry. Again, by using this type of media to get our product out, this is going to bring national recognition to our region from a product that started here and is going to continue to grow here. So how do we support Northern Nevada? In the next six months, we're looking at three warehouse staff, two information technology staff, and two creative and admin staff. And that's including four executive-level employees that are currently full-time working on this project. If we continue to sustain growth, as we feel that we will, this will happen year after year. We'll continue to add seven to 10 employees over the next five to six years. This is just a start of what we plan to do. It is not just going to end with bringing amazing projects and teaching you about your children to your door. This is a team that plans to continue to grow these types of businesses to bring families back together. So how can you help? There is something to be said for grassroots marketing and grassroots behavior in Northern Nevada. Some of the groups out there have been able to really grow just from word-of-mouth advertising. We're really counting on Northern Nevada, and we're counting on leaders in the community to go out, tell people about this amazing business that is not just another business that's going to put some money in someone's pocket. This is going to bring families back together, and we want people to know that it started in Northern Nevada. In addition, it's going to grow jobs in Northern Nevada for the next decade. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Great, any questions? Tell us one thing. How can people get a hold of you? Do you have a website?
Yes.
Or you have an address? A telephone number?
We are at CreativeCrate.com. And find me...I don't know if you guys are having recess or anything, but we do have business cards, so find me afterwards. I'll give each of you a business card. But CreativeCrate.com is really the place that you want to send people to. In addition, do we have a new promo code? In addition, use promo code FF15. If you have anyone that wants to go and purchase on our website, use promo code FF15. That'll give them 15% discount on their first crates.
Great questions. Ron Smith?
Is this a subscription-type program? Or do they have to go on a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, to get a different box?
Sure. I'm going to actually have our CEO, Joel, answer that question, or Chris. There is on a subscription basis, but we also have some starter kits, and we're looking to do some different things other than just the monthly subscription.
Want to do one more question?
Yeah, the idea is to have it as a subscription because in between the boxes actually comes a newsletter. And that newsletter is where the parental education's coming. We're looking at the latest research in early childhood development. We're looking at news trends, what's happening. And then just some general advice tips for getting your child to sleep or whatever issues they're having, as well as how to interact with the boxes. The boxes, actually, each project type has a kind of a...like a...well, we call it animal essence. So there's four different types of animal essences. And then you also teach, if your kid tends to like monkey projects, here's how to get him to like a giraffe project. And so we're really helping to support, no matter what they get in the box, they're actually going to really enjoy it. That's the original thing, so it was going to be subscription-based. We can keep that education, keep those touches, keep helping families along the way. Eventually, we want to have a website portion of that. So again, bring them back into the community, give them as much support as we possibly can. But beyond that, grandparents seem to be as interested in buying 20 boxes and storing them in the closet, using them when they want. So what we're probably going to do is recycle old projects. So as we get through the monthly, we'll keep reinventing something new. The ones that come off after a while will then be repackaged into single-off projects that aren't part of the education-based training.
So the crates do change occasionally, right?
Yes. We'll probably have the first three set for any new subscribers. That gives us time to ingratiate people into the system, get used to it. Also give them enough information, feedback from those boxes that we can kind of control it, so they know what their kids really like. Then moving forward, each month, we'll be sponsoring something new.
Good. Great idea. One thing, would you give us your name for the record?
My name is Joel Bauer. I'm the CEO of Creative Crate.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thanks, gentlemen. We appreciate it. It sounds like a great, creative, and new business, so we appreciate you being here today.
Great. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Did I see you in a paper competition?
Yes.
Okay.
Nirek did a write-up on us.
Okay, right, I saw that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull the consent item? Not looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Moved and approved consent item 5.1.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 5.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Let's move on to general business. Consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Western Regional Water Commission. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The appointment to the Western Regional Water Commission will expire on June 1st, 2013. Councilmember Mike Carrigan is the incumbent and is willing to serve another two-year term. Mayor Martini is placing the recommendation of his reappointment before the council today for your action. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Mr. Lawson?
Quick one. Mr. Carrigan does term out in '14. Do we move that up to November for a reappointment? Or does it occur this time every two years?
Is it even going to be a committee after this?
I don't have a direct answer to that, but it would end with Mr. Carrigan's term, and you could appoint someone to fulfill the unexpired term.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I'm moved to approve. Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 6.1 as outlined. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Should you build on that, Mike?
I vote no. I can stay off of this.
Yeah, yeah. Passed unanimously. 6.2, review, consideration and possible approval of an extension of an exclusive negotiating agreement. Mr. Ornellis?
Mayor Martini, members of the council, Armando Ornellis, city planner. Six months ago, the council and redevelopment agency board approved an exclusive negotiated... Six months ago, the council and redevelopment agency board approved an exclusive negotiating agreement with E&amp;A, I'm sorry, AED Investments, and that agreement runs through today. The term of the agreement can only be approved by the agency board and the city council, and this agenda item asks for an extension of six months, which would take it through September 23rd of this year. The developer has requested the extension of the term to gain some additional time to complete their analysis of the feasibility of the project, including the completion of a market analysis and the availability of project financing, and prepare an updated development proposal and negotiate the disposition and development agreement with the agency. There is a provision that was, that I added to the agreement based on a conversation we had a couple of weeks ago, where the developer has indicated that if the market analysis, you know, comes back and it doesn't show that the support for the project is there, then, you know, essentially there wouldn't be any necessity to keep going. So we agreed on a date of May 10th for that purpose, and so, you know, instead of having it run six months, really, if that, if that market analysis is not completed, or if it doesn't substantiate the need for the project, then it would just terminate at that point in time. So staff is recommending the approval and extension. Bill Irwin of AED Investments, and it looks like Red Tuntland are here, and if they'd like, if you'd like, they can provide you an update on their progress today and answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Armando or the developer? Mr. Lawson?
Armando, we anticipate...
Then we'll know something in this extension.
Yes.
It's, it won't go on again.
No, and frankly, Councilman Lawson, I think, you know, the six months we feel is more than adequate. We had a discussion that perhaps it could be less, but rather than be in a position where potentially we have to ask for a second extension...
I'm okay with that. I just make sure that we're making progress, and I'd love to see it work, but I understand that financially it doesn't, and we can't do it, so I'm okay with that.
Mr. Carrigan?
Armando, just one question. Anybody else interested in the land?
I've had a couple of inquiries, more on the multifamily side. I haven't heard anything, you know, very recently. I'm not saying there's not interest out there, but I haven't had, you know, a lot, you know, a great deal of demand for it.
Okay, any other questions? Questions for the developer? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve item 6.2.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 6.2 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen. Good luck, hope it works out.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing items, second reading of bill number 2655, amending chapter one of the Sparks Municipal Code to update the Nevada revised statute from NRS 266.160 to the current applicable statute, NRS 268.014. Someone doing this?
This is simply an update of the municipal...
You are?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions for chat? If not looking, oh, wait a minute. This is a public hearing.
There you go.
Let me open it to the public. Anyone in the public like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Mr. Smith?
I move that bill number 2655, in ordinance amending SMC 1.01.010 be approved and adopted.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 7.1, bill number 2655. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, chat. Number eight, 8.1, public hearing, second reading, discussion and possible action, CA-6-12 of bill number 2651, and ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to modify the expiration provisions of special use permits. Mr. Rundle.
Jim Rundle, senior planner here. This item was continued from February's meeting regarding expiration dates for site plan reviews and special use permits. Staff worked on the question posed by the city council regarding if this item could be retroactive, which applications it would apply to regarding site plan reviews and special use permits. And we've determined that it could be retroactive, and we included a list on to which applications could utilize the essentially extra year that this, that this code amendment would provide for. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Rundle? Mr. Smith?
So it was one year with one-year option, right? Now it's two years with a one-year option?
That's right.
And it is retroactive, and anybody that has an approved site plan can take advantage of that?
Yeah, if they had an approved site plan review or special use permit in the last two years, so if they got a special use permit in 1995 and it expired, it doesn't go back to 1995. It essentially goes back to 2011 or so. So...
Well, if they had one in 1995, it'd already be expired.
Right.
Right.
Mr. Lawson?
That's why, oh, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Councilman Smith, that's why we included that list for the council, so that it could see which ones it would apply to.
Okay, thank you.
So by that list, I see 10 that it affects. Big deal. Perfect.
Mr. Carrigan?
That was my question.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Rundle? Mr. Adams?
Adams.
Yeah, thank you. John Quincy?
Just to, just to be clean on this, Jim, is there a particular date that we could make this retroactive to that would include all those 10 entities, businesses?
I suppose so. I don't know the date off the top of my head, but more importantly, I think that the list that accompanies the staff report reflects which entitlements it would affect. And so I guess if...
Maybe...
The earliest one on there, chat, is 7/21.
Okay, so how about July 1st, 2011? Retroactive to July 1st, 2011?
Need that in the motion, chat?
Will that make any difference to the other ones?
I think it would be cleaner if you're going to make something retroactive rather than going retroactive into perpetuity.
We had put, I put something in the ordinance. I was looking quickly as to what I had added.
You may have, already have it in there. After my smashing victory on my last code amendment, I figured I could go on this one, yeah.
Because we wanted it to be clear as to which, which it would apply to. I don't see that I added a date.
You're going to have to add in a paragraph, is what you're saying, chat, if it's not in there?
You could do it. You could delineate it today. Would January 2011 cover everybody?
Well, what we put, it's essentially in section two of the ordinance, is that we said all ordinances or part of ordinances in conflict shall be repealed. All site plan reviews and special use permits, permits which have not yet expired will be affected.
Okay, that's, that's good. As long as we have something finite in there, that's, that's fine. Thank you, Jim. Sorry for the...
It's all right, no problem. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open to the audience. Anyone want to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for action. Mr. Lawson?
I move to adopt bill number 2651, amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code, modifying the expiration provisions for special use permits, chapter 20.13, and site plan review, chapter 20.31, and other matters properly relating thereto.
Second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item 8.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jim. Sean, we're not having a closed-door session? Comments from the city council and city manager? Comments from the public? I have no speaking cards. Anyone in the public want to speak? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Wait for it. You need to go.
Not my problem.
Yep. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. We'll call the order of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for March 25, 2013. With a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency members, Ratty absent, Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt absent. City Attorney, Chad Adams?
Here.
And agency manager, Sean Carey?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I'll take comments from the public. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak today? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. 3.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of February 25, 2013?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Number four, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period February 7, 2013 through March 6, 2013.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Number five, review, consideration, possible approval of an extension of the exclusive negotiating agreement between the city of Sparks, the redevelopment agency of the city of Sparks, and AED Investments LLC.
Chairman Smith, members of the agency, Armando Arnellis, city planner.
The exclusive negotiating agreement is, has both the city council, the city and the redevelopment agency's parties, so both the bodies have to approve the extension.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Armando. Comments from the agency? Mr. Carey?
Thank you. I meant to do this during the council meeting, but it was a little slow on the trigger. County Commissioner Vaughn, representing Sparks, has let the city know that they're looking for a Sparks resident to participate in the Washoe County Senior Citizens Service Center, and it would be a two-year appointment that would be made by the Washoe County Commission. If any member of the public is interested in serving in this position, please contact the city manager's office here at the city of Sparks, or go to www.washoecounty.us and click on the Get Involved area and look for this opportunity. And it'd be appreciated if members of our community who have an interest in senior issues